Meeting called to order. The work session is called to order at 6:05. The Running Board of Education meeting is called to order in the Board of Education's In Compliance with Chapter 231 of the Public Laws of 1975 instead of the Public Meetings Act. The time, date, and location of this meeting was verbally advertised by notifying the retrospect as well as the President's notice at the Barrow Hall. Running Post Office, Mary Bold School, Nine Bingham School, Grace Downing School, and the Runnymede Public School District website. Roll call board members, please.
Ms. Dare, Ms. Anderson.
Here.
Ms. Peely.
Here.
Ms. Trubach.
Here.
Ms. Davidson.
Here.
Ms. Farrey.
Here.
Ms. Trent Heidleozzo. Ms. Panzarella. Ms. Spalding.
Here.
Leo Corr.
Also, President Mark Iugiti, Superintendent, Sean McCann, Business Administrator, Supervisor of Curriculum Instruction. Jay Yezzi, Principal of Bingham and Downing School. Steve Peely, Principal of Mary Bold School. Phil Silva, Vice Principal of Mary Bold School. And Frank Heinz, Supervisor of Building Brands. At this time, I would like to introduce Ms. Sue Schreiber. We have a presentation.
Sure.
Hello.
Alright, ready?
Thank you for coming.
Thank you for having me.
Hello.
Hello.
So, the reason we're here is that out of an advisory group, we need four days a week in the mornings. And one of the things that our class is doing this year is we would like to do some community service activities. So there's about fifteen students in my class. We've split up into different groups. And this group is here to talk about what their community service activity is because each group is doing something different. And they want to tell you what they would like to do and ask you for permission to go forward with the activity.
Absolutely.
So this is Gianna and Arabella.
Um, so Margaret chose to reach out to a local animal shelter in Pensoke called Almost Home Animal Shelter. So, we reached out to them and asked if they needed any certain donations or we could do a donation drive for them to collect certain items for, I guess, within the shelter. So, they emailed us back and they gave us a whole list. So we have a list of the flyers that we have flyers we can give to you. Um, and just regular things like laundry detergent, paper towels, dish shelves, plastic bags, blankets, washcloths, towels, leashes, collars, things like that that we could collect throughout school. So we were thinking maybe we could go around to each home room in each grade and have like a box in the front of each classroom. And we just had people in each classroom, have them collect those things and put them in the boxes. And they said we can even take a visit there. So we could bring the supplies there. And they said it'd be a free trip. And we can help volunteer there. And we could walk the dogs and feed the animals.
Wash station.
Wash station. Yeah.
Clean cages.
Clean cages.
Clean cages? You got the clean cages there? Oh, boy.
Okay, so would you like to give them each a flyer so they can see it? And tell them the time period you would like to do the drive.
Um, so sometime during December, do you thought?
Oh, no, that's, I think that's.
That, Angel.
Oh, and for the donation drive through the school, the deadline would be November thirteenth. So that way we can collect all the items as much as possible.
If I can collect the candy drive.
I have one question. Do you think that, are you gonna just do it here at Volt or are you gonna try and get the little guys involved?
Well, I mean, it depends on who would like to get involved. So I mean, I think it'd be good to get those little guys involved. Put down the email also.
Maybe we could just bring, drop off supplies here to you guys? Does anybody else?
Okay, it sounds great if we include the whole school community.
Okay.
Because it makes the younger children feel like they are also helping. And a few years ago, Downing, and they collected many, many thousands of box tops. Those kids are extremely, the young kids are extremely and being extremely excited to volunteer to do anything.
Okay, that sounds great.
Maybe we could take a trip to the schools one day and have some of your representatives talk to the kids.
That'd be great.
And then you could put a box, just like one box there, you know?
Right.
And then we can be collected by the main office. Because I think that they, I think you'd get a lot of support from the little guys.
It's great.
So that would just, we're just trying to help you make your, you know, your fundraiser, well, that's not a fundraiser, but your mission a little more successful.
Okay. Any other questions? So we haven't talked about the trip part yet because we still haven't finalized all the details with them. So we figured we could bring that out at a future board meeting.
Mr. Iugiti will be the lay as a co-host.
I'm right around the corner. You gotta watch out for that.
Right, yeah.
But, yeah, we think it would be great. So, thank you. Can we, can we, can we share this with our friends and stuff?
Absolutely.
Alright, awesome.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you so much for all the time. Alright, so at this time, with nothing further, we can review the regular agenda. So I will begin on page three of the agenda at reports. Ms. Iugiti, wonder.
I want to thank the, all the parents and the teachers for the state's education this year for the PTA. Everybody volunteered their time.
I was just saying, I'm raised, sorry.
Also, with a weak respect, I want to thank Mr. Beatty, Mr. Callahan for their efforts. And the weak respect, talking about age-appropriate instruction, folks on harassment, information bullying. Yes, and some of the Rockin' Power. We're naming this Sunday last week, all the schools, as well as another time at family night. It was attended by roughly a hundred and ten, a hundred and ten people. It was a nice turnout. A lot of positive feedback about that, especially from the young kids, some parents as well. They love them. Yes, for my own local thanks to PD, I was around table last month. Couple of big hot items for just the EDRS. No major changes, just make sure all compliance with the POC systems as well as the HIV POC system. And the park data is also a topic in the information released yesterday. We've got some positive results throughout the state. We just got that information. I have it or something. But, and we'll refer to that. We'll get our numbers probably in the next couple of weeks. The initial part data is not good throughout the state first. So, so we should be interested to see what that is. Myself, Dr. McCarron, some of the administrators, we tell you some park workshops. I know Mr. Buckhan attended one as well. So how we can relay that data to you in the next couple of months and break it down. Because it does still, you know, we kind of know what it's gonna look like, but we want to make sure that we're giving you the right information. Any questions?
The faculty just had a comment. Also, Naomi attended it and Patty Adair attended it. And just for the board's sake and for those that are present, prior to the park, one of the litmus tests was the National Assessment of Educational Progress. And the Assistant Commissioner of Education presented the park workshop we were at. And she stated that in the United States, New Jersey public schools have placed either second or third nationally year after year after year. State of Massachusetts seems to be hitting number one almost every time. She also pointed out that states vary, have the legal right to vary their graduation requirements. And that they are extremely more stringent in the state of New Jersey than they are in most states in the United States. The last thing she pointed out was for, for school districts and for boards and parents not to overreact to the scores that come out November. This is the first time going through a completely different type of assessment. That until we've taken it a second time, we can do some comparison apples to apples to see exactly how we're doing and progressing. She finished up by stressing simply this to all of the board members in attendance, and I want to use her words correctly. She says, "An effective school challenges their students academically. And secondly, they provide the most effective professional development for their staff. So they're able to challenge those students effectively. And they should learn to incorporate testing that is very similar to what they're gonna be seeing on future park tests so the children are more comfortable." Again, this was the first time for this test. So that was some information that I took from that meeting. And Naomi, anything else?
I, I thought it was very interesting to see that because of how states vary, not every state has as high standards as New Jersey. Like, there are many schools in the South that opted out to certain standardized testing. And I think that, you know, it proves to me that our students are getting the best academically that they can. But yet, I feel very strongly and I feel bad for those students that their, their states have actually opted out of them feeling like they could actually compete and be, achieve a higher level. So it makes me concerned for the whole state, not the whole state, but the whole nation, that we don't have the same standardized testing. Because if you move to Texas or another state, your children may be high off or they, they will be not succeeding as well as New Jersey students. So that's just a, you know, a parent's concern of mine, like, you know, as a parent that lives in those states. Like, what are you asking your children to achieve? Are you asking them not to be better because of their, their low, low expectations? So that's kind of where I felt, coming out at me, I felt sorry for those students that don't have higher expectations because what does their future hold? You know, where are their expectations?
That was what Dr. Earl said.
Yes.
And she said you cannot look at all between New Jersey and Aspen Park. Totally two separate. Completely two separate things. So like, it's one of those moments where, just like when we moved away and we changed the teacher evaluation model. And before it might have been narrative and everything was distinguished. Following the new rubrics and everything like that, not everything's always distinguished. And that's okay. But it's understanding that at least now we have a better perception and idea of where our students are to really drive instruction.
And just to find a couple of things, last time we met, a couple of robbery places, annual five K they did back in September. Raise some money to interact with the grand, a lot of trade kids I know. Cross-country team, which is big, I believe. And also just soccer grand.
Field hockey. Field hockey.
Field hockey.
Good for you.
Good. And then also, there was the comedy night this past Saturday. It was about sixteen hundred dollars. Over at the VFW.
You went to that?
No. About seventeen hundred dollars.
Good for them.
And that's something they're going to want to do annually, the VFW.
So it was funny.
My, my son won a free baseball registration.
And he wants that one of those baskets.
To save the one fifteen, of course he has. Thank you. Dr. McCarron, you want to throw yours there as well?
From the board's side, we're in the process of completing our road grants. Roofing projects are coming to an end. They're doing final finishings along the vault's roof. They're making sure that everything's done correctly. We haven't had a ton of rain. But when we have had rain, it's making sure that all of the rooms are okay, everything's been placed where it needs to be, and doing those final touches. Currently, they've been in the process of doing windows. Doors will be coming in in the next two weeks. So there's been a lot of work going on around the district. They've been working the third shift. So a lot of students are leaving. And then you'll see the trucks pull up. We'll do a set of windows at a time. The room will be cleaned before teachers come in the next morning. And then they'll come back and do the same thing later. So they've been doing a great job with that. And I will say that when there have been problems, they have been very proactive in terms of finding solutions and getting updates immediately.
Mr. Peely took a few minutes to show me. Thank you again, around. So if we have time before the regular meeting, you could go right into the hallway there. The new windows are beautiful. They really look nice. They look good.
We're also preparing for our CUSAC. Runnymede will be going through a three-year, every three years we go through a full CUSAC visitation. So it'll begin with the facility visitation, then they'll come in or view curriculum and instruction, governance, all of those areas. So we're making sure that everything's ready for them and to make it as easy as possible. When the state does come in, it's our county office administrators come in and they will do the full walkthrough of everything. And evaluate where we currently are with everything. And then we've also just did our October fifteenth student count where we make sure that we have all kids on records to report to the state. And that's how we get our state funding each year and how they represent the number of students that we have in the district. So that's the October fifteenth. In curriculum, we've worked with Black Horse Pike on training for the Alex Mathematics Program, which is used in grade six to eight as an intervention for students. We had the Rudge Down Assembly, which tied in with our HIV initiative. The PTA was nice enough to help along with the municipal alliance in funding that project. So it was three, actually four school assemblies, two at vaults, one at each school. We then had a parent night that very evening as well.
Can you get those brownies for next August meeting?
Um, we did have, in food service, Papa John's closed. So we will be using a different pizza vendor due to the fact that Papa John's in Runnymede closed. And it's salad.
Salad puffs.
Salad puffs. Also, that's like more like homebrew.
Absolutely.
So we actually, we used that pizza the night of the family event.
And the pizza's better than.
It's much better. Much better.
Everyone loved that pizza. And then we served that family night. We, we also served new brownies. So as Ms. Jewel was preparing the brownies for the parent night, every student's walking by going, "How much are that? Well, can I buy those? What's going on with that?" So we, we are looking into selling those as well during the cafeteria periods. Conferences are coming up, so we are finalizing scores for Star Reading, a Star Math, which is replaced with math testing. And speaking with teachers and administrators, they feel as though it will provide better information to give a parent a better idea as far as where their students are and what they can actually do to work with their students. I know that with math previously, many times parents would look at an area and be like, "Well, specifically, what's that mean?" And even when you would call, they'd say, "Oh, well, you know, if you just look at standards, that's kind of our fault." This is more specific. It gives you a little bit more detail for that. That's all I have.
Thank you.
I just have a question.
Go ahead.
How much did municipal alliance, what percent was to?
It was one of, that was.
How much did municipal alliance, what percent did the municipal alliance from the barra pay for?
We have a thousand dollars a year towards the seventh. They did.
And the PTA paid fifteen hundred.
Exactly my point. Thank you.
Well, the lines get paid for all of her revenue.
Oh, that's great.
So it's pieces of each.
All three schools.
So for this particular separately, they were worth one thousand dollars.
Well, they, they said a thousand dollars a year towards a sum. They were getting this, but.
That's great.
Alright. Any other questions? Alright, does anyone have any questions on the principal's report, nurse's report, building and grounds report? Social education report?
I did want to be that.
Oh, Mrs. Yezzi, go ahead.
Yeah, you may remember the spring Linda Hurd came by and she kind of talked about the monarch butterflies and everything. I mean, she did an amazing job all summer. Like, she was a rock star. Like, she went by, watered every day. Whatever she asked for, Frank Heinz and Mark and everybody, and Sean, were like, were on it, were on it, whatever. So she did get it certified as a waste station for butterflies. And so I invited her to our staff meeting today to just kind of like share her experiences. And I, like, it was adorable. It like really brings you back like the art of teaching. Because sometimes you get lost in new math series and, you know, lesson plans and the common core and everything. She was really just like a breath of fresh air. And she did present me with a certificate for Downing Elementary School this afternoon. I know. It was so sweet. She wanted me to share this with you. And I think it was like two hundred and sixty butterflies between the three gardens in Runnymede. I think her garden, the one at Downing, and the one at the library are all like certified waste stations. And she's so proud. It's such a great thing for the community. So I was surely kind of in the stuff at Downing. But it literally just happened today. That's why it's kind of all in part two.
Thank you.
Yeah, but she was wonderful. And I feel like it really liked to get the teachers back a minute and they'll, oh, okay, you know, whatever. She just had great ideas. So we're gonna keep in touch and whatever she needs, pretty much we'll do for her. She's doing a great job for the school community, so.
Thank you so much for sharing.
I do have a question. This is Yezzi?
Yes.
On, on your report for October, under Halloween activities, is that the same time for each school that they're having a parade?
Yes. Okay. As the same setup as last year and.
Right, they're doing the same activities.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And the other question on the nurse's report, building and grounds report, or the principal's report at this time? If not, we have, do we have a PTA report? Hi, this is Berger.
Um, we are hosting the Trunk or Treat this weekend at the Trenton High School.
Doors open at six. Trunk or Treats from seven to eight thirty.
And so far, we have about forty cars that are prepaid for already.
Where, what cutoff is it?
You can, you can do it up until Sunday night. What do you can do with that? And I should check five dollars.
Car number cutoff.
Oh, no, we have plenty of it back there.
And we are finishing up our coupon books fundraiser. And, um, the Volt's books will be going out tomorrow. And then we're gonna be doing Downing and Bingham tomorrow night. So they'll be going out Friday or Monday.
Is there a way to load connect for the Trunk or Treat to the local families now or is that not such a?
Mr. Peely already helped us out over the, I don't know, it was the weekend or earlier in the week. Put it up on Volt's, on our district website and put it out to our sixth, seventh, eighth graders. So thanks again, Mr. Peely, for that favor. I think we're good because we had more than that. We had, we had a whole bunch come in yesterday and today. So we're well above forty. So I think we'll be fine.
Mine's one of them.
Mine too came in today. So I did.
Could be a successful fundraiser.
Yeah. And the VFW, the VFW is paying for all the concessions. So it's not gonna fall. Anything we make is profit. Anything else?
Alright, I have a question. Do you have a PTA form with you this evening that, so we could join tonight?
That was our membership.
Membership then?
I have envelopes.
You remember last month, we asked for members, for the parent, for the board members who?
To the parents.
Yeah, that's all we need, for the people who do not have children.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alright. Camden County Educational Services Commission is progress. New Jersey School Board Association?
Uh, our meeting is November twenty-first. And I have not received anything on, any recommendations to New Jersey School Board. I'll probably get that in about a week or two.
Okay.
But other than that, progress.
And we will all be going, well, most of us will be going down for training and workshops next week. Black Horse Pike Regional School District, negotiations?
Um, progress. I'm just reaching out, I'm going to speak to someone to begin the process of negotiations.
Alright, thank you. So then we'll move along to property and transportation. There are a few things that look like were added. Playoff game for field hockey girls. So there's facilities, field trips, and busing issues. Any questions there? Mr. Dr. McCarron, how's our bus working out?
I see her, everybody.
Our bus has been working extremely nicely. We were able to drop one of our daily runs in the middle of the day. And then the bus is currently transporting students who are, who are placed outside of the district who we're still responsible for. So it's been helping us offset that cost.
Awesome.
But as you know, with those situations, since you see them each month on the board report, things are always changing. So our office is constantly making sure that it's being fully utilized as much as possible. So that's always our first option. And then we always look to say, if there's a better option, we're the most cost-effective thing.
I think that's right.
Dr. McCarron, you told me in a conversation that I had that you were having your office keep tabs, right, on all the quotes and different things. So you'll have a dollar sign for us to see how much we see.
The savings.
Correct. So every run that we do, we're still quoting it out to other companies. So that way we can say, well, this is how much it would have cost us. And then we can actually put a price tag to that run. But we're also working with other districts now, when there's joint opportunities, where we're actually able to charge other districts for transporting their students to school as well. So that works out well.
Good idea.
I'm sorry, thank you. And no, no other questions there? How about personnel? We have quite a few items there. Looks like there's sixteen items. Lots of babies. That's a good thing. It's a wonderful thing. Any questions there? No? Say it. Alright. Alright, then we'll go to finance. We have some transfers, professional development workshops. Missy and I are joining you for dinner one night.
There's a sheet going around of professional development or something for board members if you haven't gotten it.
Any questions there? There's a few on the back as well.
Number's one, great.
I have a question. What's number four, environmental designing?
It's for a air quality test that we have performed at Volt's as well as Bingham. Especially with Volt's, you're gonna be gymnasium, you know, roof can make sure that you know things that shouldn't be floating around in the air. And saying things like, uh, poor fashion is a real test as well.
We got that testing result back for that?
Luminar results back. Everything checked out okay. We're confident to put it down.
Thank you very much. Any questions there? We have some. Go ahead.
What is an out-of-county surcharge? Have I seen that before?
Where are you?
What number is that? Number five. They penalize you when you're in Camden County. An out-of-county surcharge you pay.
It's closer to that. So there's a five percent surcharge if you're out-of-county versus Camden County. And a lot of times when we don't get, and sometimes when we don't get quotes from within our county, another option is going out-of-county. And you'll still get better quotes than you were getting previously.
Even with the surcharge, right? Yeah. Because they're so much cheaper.
And it's five percent.
Even with five percent, it's still less than what you get in Camden. How sad is that? Welcome to Camden County.
I'm sorry, I'm doing two things once again.
Just a note to.
Go ahead.
So what tuition contracts for number six, that's actually money back and giving us for students instead of us putting in.
Yeah.
I know some.
I would never really put in somewhere else then, so it's fine. Like, it comes and it gets, it's a good night. I like to drop the bottom half, so that'll be the question.
Okay. I was just saying, because I have, I have Mondays and Tuesdays open, so I was gonna go to a couple this year. Angel, what I try? Alright, so if there's, I believe there's probably no issues with curriculum. That's just reimbursement. And then we, policy and public relations, memorandum of agreement. We're going to approve, Ms. Schreiber, students who spoke to us this evening. And then we do have an executive session for student issues and personnel matters.
I missed my opportunity to ask your question. I'm sorry.
So ask your question for what?
Did you ask if we had any questions? Number sixteen, I have a question.
Oh, yeah.
I'm sorry.
Ask your question.
Um, so I see going earlier that for the girls' basketball team, we have a volunteer coach, we have a head coach, and we have an assistant coach. And then I see for boys' basketball, we have a head coach.
We posted.
For an assistant.
That would be internally.
For a boys' basketball?
For boys' basketball, so we have.
So since no one internally, does it now open up to the outside world?
Yes.
That's, no, I'm just kidding. Just kidding. I don't have. Yeah, I wanna, I'm just, as a fan open, that's what I want.
So we'll just approve that as soon as you guys find someone.
So I have another question was, I noticed changes. So were these positions interviewed for after posted or how did that work?
Some people, some positions were just filled by because we only had one candidate for some of the positions. But they still were, I know Mr. Peely and Mr. Sevan talked to each person who's putting in to outline the expectations. We're gonna put some new things in, I know, in place that we talked about the past couple of months, a couple of years regarding communication for all the. regarding communication for all the, even in our murals, just make sure we call some place for that. But some of the positions people chose not to.
Yeah, okay, good.
So is your question because of the changes, or because, or because one has three and one has one?
Well, both, actually. I have a question because A, the basketball coach, obviously for the last two years, is not the basketball coach, so I wonder if there was, you know, if the previous coach had no interest, or if he, the previous coach no longer was the best candidate for the job.
Just, these are people who.
Gotcha. And then, obviously, my concern is, you know, one, one team has three coaches for all intents and purposes, and then one has one.
We'll make sure we have a stamp.
I would gladly volunteer, I'm sure I could pass necessary background checks.
Might be a conference of assistants.
That would be a conference.
Yeah, I know, well, you know, I could always remove myself from here to help there.
I'd like to say help some boys' basketball, that would be comical.
Excuse me, I did that for nine years in the row, I was like, you know.
I'm not saying, no, are we going to put it out to the public that we're going to eventually need additional people? Like, how, how would we?
They're listed already?
Yeah.
Where did you post it, Mrs.?
Was it west, right, in all the buildings?
Okay, thank you.
That was even off of other teachers, the other buildings, they were. We'll make sure we have a stamp.
Yeah, no, no, I'm sure.
That's not, that's not.
Yeah, no, I don't at all doubt that. That's not where my doubt is at all.
Any other questions? If not, we can make a motion to adjourn, and we could, I would like you maybe to take a walk and go see the new windows and do whatever we need to do before the regular scheduled meeting. Any other questions, issues, concerns?
The one question I had.
Actually, I have something as well, go ahead.
There was a fundraiser, pennies for pasta, is that all district-wide fundraiser?
Um, that is just it down.
Okay, and what is, could you just?
Um, hasn't started yet, it started early November. We did it last year. I feel like, is it for babys, I'm like, now I'm like second guessing myself, whatever. I think it was Bingham chose to do the mathathon in September, and Dally chose to do pasta for pennies. I think there was like some personal interest amongst the staff. And then I know like the classroom that raises enough money, like Olive Bar and gets some pasta for lunch. That's kind of why I thought.
Okay, thank you, okay. If I could forward more information, I don't know what else.
Something that I want to speak to the board to think about is, I met with Mark earlier this week in regards to the extracurriculars and the sports. You know, we spoke in August about adding sports, and I know that sports are very important to a lot of us, right? So. Yeah, I'll be on in five minutes. So I just wanted to, like, I, the past month, as a board member, I have had many parents come to me with concerns about athletics. So of course, what I do is, what I should do is tell them to call the coach or the principal. And at the, some people even wanted to come to the meeting, however, I let them know that they didn't follow the proper chain of command. So they, you know, could come, but, you know, they wouldn't really, they would be hurt, but there wasn't really much they could do because they didn't follow the proper chain of command. So they didn't come. Because if they have a legitimate issue, like anyone, they should complain and follow the proper chain of command. With that being said, you know, I had Mr. Ainucci last month pull our policy in regards to sports. And it's not something that I want to really necessarily talk about this month, but I would like to talk about it next month, because I'd like everyone to think about it for a month. I don't necessarily, I don't necessarily know if it's in the best interest of our children to include fourth and fifth graders in all of our sports.
I agree with you.
The reason why, and I, and it's funny, because when my daughter was here ten years ago, I think I was one of the people who fought with Mr. Ainucci when he was a principal to include the fourth and fifth grade.
No, it was actually the coach.
You were the coach, you were, you absolutely were the coach. Because whenever I couldn't find my kid, she had her in gold, her first game of fifth grade, yeah.
She volunteered.
I thought you left her here. So with that being said, I feel as though, this is my personal opinion right now, but I want every board member to think about it, and I'd like to put it on our work session next month. If you look at all of the other schools, most of them, if they even include anything, they only, in our league, they only include fifth grade. If they even include fifth grade.
Most of them are.
Most of them, most of them are sixth to eighth grade. Now, I'm not saying that there's not some athletes who absolutely can, can hold them, can hold their own, because I know there are. However, the majority of the athletes would not be able to hold their own. And I gave the example to one, to Mark, where if you know the person, I said, like, an eighth grade boy and like my son. There's no way they could play on a baseball team, a soccer team, a basketball team, there's just no way physically. Now, I know that that happens in high school, but I don't necessarily know that our policy is in the best interest.
I'd have to agree with you. I think I, for a member, I think that's an excellent statement.
So I just want you to think about it. Because if we change things, if we change the policy for the first and second meeting, it would affect, you know, our spring. It probably won't affect basketball and cheerleading this year.
Right.
But it would affect, it would affect anything after that. Yes, well, we should have it, we should have it. So I, I just don't know your personal opinions, that's my personal opinion, but I'm only one person on this board. I'd like to, to, I mean, to hear, maybe we can ask Mr. Peely to speak about it, the members of the public to speak about it. You know.
Which sports are we talking about?
I'm talking about all sports.
New policy.
I'm talking about all sports.
I think it would be beneficial for us to think about it and also have a public, open public meeting for parents.
I was even thinking, maybe, like, if, if possible, I don't know if this is possible, but maybe everyone in Volks School, like, right now, if we could put a parent survey on the board and, on the website, and actually give one, and ask their thoughts, like, you know, if you guys have come up with some questions. Because I wish I had as many complaints or people, parents concerned about academics than I do sports. I mean, it was a full-time job for me in September. Like, I just pretty much stopped answering my phone. So with that being said, I mean, people have opinions, maybe they don't want to come to this board meeting and talk about it.
But the survey is.
The survey's there.
If it's, if it's anonymous.
It could be anonymous, we don't need names, you know what I mean? But I, I feel as though maybe we can reach out to the community, reach out to the parents, reach out to the admin team to get their thoughts on it. That's, I just would like the board to revisit that.
Well, and another question would be, if you're redoing anything with regards to that, would it, would it affect negotiations since that is going to be a process that starts in terms of grades, coaches, the whole policy, or just what?
You still have, you never get, we're not getting?
Just the grades.
Actually, what I would like to do is, I would like to add more intermiorals just for fourth and fifth graders.
I agree.
We talked about that.
Because possibly doing similar, like, if you're doing soccer, you go soccer.
Soccer intermioral, absolutely.
And have them maybe make three teams and have them compete against each other, you know?
It's the basics, it helps with the basics that are needed for, you know, we're at a disadvantage if we are allowing, you know.
Let's think about it for a while, like you said, instead of the discussions, yeah.
That's going to be something that we're going to think about. We also, we had talked about last month, but we had talked about possibly going back to committees, and it was something that was thrown out at the end of the meeting, I think, but we didn't pursue it.
Well, I think that, I also spoke to Mr. Ainucci about that as well, there's a little bit that we would have to do for that that wouldn't probably happen until our reorg meeting. If, if we would probably, like, I would take a straw poll and see if everyone agrees to that. And I would still have every committee, we were saying, like, meet, like, before the meeting, so five o'clock, five fifteen, five thirty. And you would get, like, this is my first choice of committee, this is my second choice, because you have to be on multiple committees. But I'd still like them to meet on a monthly basis. And with that being said, I, you know, with November and December, what it is, our reorg meeting, we could then change. Because if we go back to committees like that, there's not necessarily reason for a work session, correct? Correct, Dr. McCarron? Correct. We would just have lengthier reports during the.
Regular session.
During the regular session, like, like we used to do it.
I don't know for sure, I can check, but you might be, and Dr. Carron might be able to tell you, you might be able to change it by resolution.
Oh, I'm not saying that we can't change it.
Just realistic.
Actually, I don't have, I don't, I don't have time to change it before.
Okay, I'm just saying, I'm just.
You know, maybe someone else wants to be president, you know, we can, we can talk about other things like that.
I know, I'm just saying.
So I just don't think, right now, with everything going on, everything on our agenda, and like, everything that we're doing, because I would like to give a presentation, I am actually going to give a presentation next month on board ethics. So we already have things planned. So that's why I figured the best part to do was when we all have our calendars out at our reorg meeting. January, first week of January. Any other questions, comments, concerns? I need a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Motion should be by Chaz. Seconded by Angel, all in favor? Please, seven hundred and sixty-fourty.